All those in favor? The six of them. Next, we'll dissolve the old Board of Education.
Legally, it's called the sign and die.
Okay.
Just in motion.
Next second.
I'll make that motion.
Troy makes the motion, I have a second. Mark seconds, all those in favor? The six to none. Next, we'll do the both of our votes.
Yep.
Raise your right hand, brief feet after me. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of school director.
The duties of school director.
In and for the Ava R. One School District.
In and for the Ava R. One School District.
Douglas County.
Douglas County.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
I now need to elect officers as of the thirty seconds a year that I get to be in charge. So, I need a nomination for President of the Board of Education.
I'll nominate Bart Elson.
Of any other nomination. Seeing no other nominations, all in favor of Bart Elson as President of the Board of Education. Raise your right hand. Seven zero. Alright.
Next, we'll elect the Vice Presidents, so I need nominations for Vice President.
I'll nominate Mr. Henry.
Have a nomination of Mr. Henry. Do you have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dina.
Okay, we have another nomination of Dina Farthing. Any other nominations? Here are none, we will vote first on Mr. Henry. All those in favor? The four, those against? Three against? Mr. You don't, because you won't count.
You got a majority.
Majority. Decision on Vice President, Mr. Henry will be Vice President. Next, we'll take nominations for Secretary.
Nominate Kenny Fleetwood.
Kenny Fleetwood has been nominated, do I have any other nominations? Here are none, all those in favor of Mr. Fleetwood? The seven oh.
My recommendation to appoint, as we always have, Monica Ray is our treasurer. She's our district bookkeeper. If that is below the board, we need a nomination for that. I'll nominate Monica.
Monica's been nominated, all those in favor? The seven oh. Next, we will do the MSBA delegate. Need the nominations for MSBA delegates.
I'll nominate Kenny.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Fleetwood. Any other nominations? All those in favor? The seven oh. Then we need a delegate, MSBA delegate alternate.
Just in case that person can't go.
Mr. Henry.
Mr. Henry. Any other nominations for alternate? All those in favor? The seven oh. That concludes our reorganization meeting, and we will start the open session at six thirty.
Thank you. Make a motion.
We need a motion and a second to close the organization.
I'll make a motion.
Michael makes the motion, I have a second. Mr. Henry seconds, all those in favor? Seven oh. Okay, it's six thirty, so we're gonna go ahead and get started with our open session meeting. And I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'll start off with student board member Cameron Lee with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we're gonna do the approval of the consent agenda items. And it's gonna be in three, we'll do three different motions, unless some of the payment bills and stuff. So, the first one will be everybody, so. We'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including meeting agenda, March fund balance statement, minutes of the March fifteenth regular meeting, updated substitution, substitute teacher list, payment of monthly bills, excluding payments to Larry Benson, Cooper Lumber, Carrie Stewart, Casey Merrifield, and Garrett Baird. Do I have a motion? Michael makes the motion, I have a second. Mark seconds, all those in favor? The seven oh. Next, we'll need a motion to approve payments to Larry Benson, Cooper Lumber, and Garrett Baird. Does anyone want to make that motion in seconds?
Make the motion.
Troy makes the motion, I have a second. Michael makes a second, all those in favor? Be five oh with two abstentions. By Mr. Strong and Fleetwood. Next, we need a motion to approve payments to Carrie Stewart and Casey Merrifield. Do I have a motion? Martin makes the motion, I have a second. Kenny seconds, all those in favor? Be five oh with two abstentions, Mr. Treadway and Stewart. Thank you. Next, we will go into communications, MSBA monthly board report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of April. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the issue of school employees who become sexual predators. MSBA Center for Education Safety has developed a presentation designed to help school leaders keep students safe from sexual predators. Part of that presentation includes video interviews with former Missouri teachers convicted of sex crimes involving students. Safety Specialist with the Center for Education Safety, Gary Moore, conducted those interviews where former school employees shared how they chose and groomed their victims.
They had a student they thought was having problems at home, and they wanted to be a counselor to the student. And they were counseling the students from there, they were flirting as they got comfortable with the student.
Moore adds that while the vast majority of teachers would never be involved in such criminal behavior with students, school districts must be prepared to deal with inappropriate relationships when they occur.
It doesn't matter if you're in a metropolitan area or.
Advocated for a new state policy that will increase both access to services and funding for those services. Dr. Kim Ratlin oversees MSBA's Medicaid consortium.
And now it's kind of a game changer, so we're really excited about that. But we want for the schools, as well as parents and community providers, to understand how this can work and to really put a plan out there for how we can collaborate differently than we've done in the past. And how we can give children a brighter future through mental health services that can be provided within the context of schools now.
MSBA's Behavioral Health Work Group includes representatives from school districts, administration, state agencies and associations, managed care companies, university professors, community mental health providers, school nurses and counselors, and others. MSBA was instrumental in advocating for the new policy, allowing community providers to build Medicaid and delivering services in schools or for schools to do so, and when all conditions of the policy have been met. If you've just been elected to your local Board of Education for the first time, congratulations and welcome to school board servants. One of the first things you'll want to do is complete the sixteen hours of training required by state law and provided by MSBA. Half of the sixteen hours can be completed online, with the other half provided at various locations in the state throughout the year. Visit the MSBA website for a complete schedule of training opportunities. There's no cost to participate in the required training. Also, mark your calendar for the annual MSBA Leadership Summit to be held June second and third at the Lake of the Ozarks. Registration information for that event is posted on the MSBA website. Be sure your board is represented at the Spring Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Leadership Summit. And the annual Safe Schools Conference will immediately follow the Leadership Summit this year. That conference will be held June fourth and fifth at the Lake of the Ozarks. It features a variety of workshops and speakers on school safety issues, and is designed for board members, administrators, school resource officers, law enforcement officials, and others that have a role to play in keeping our students safe at school. Registration information for that event also is available through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comments.
I was contacted by Ms. Janelle Feldcamp, she would like to address the board. She called me earlier last weekend. We're happy to be in chess to say. Wherever you want to go.
Hi, I'm Janelle Feldcamp. I coordinate the Ava Homeschool Co-op here in Ava. I recently took it over three years ago, we started with five families, we're now up to seventy. And I also do an email list to everybody, and it's over two hundred people, so just to give you an idea of just of this area, how many homeschoolers are here. I'm here to represent all the homeschoolers of the area. I have a few supporters back there, a few more are straggling in. We recently heard about the change of the Nicheless bylaws, and we view that as a very positive change. And as taxpayers and members of this community, we would like to have the opportunity to compete in sports, at the district and state level, because what's the point in playing a sport if you can't compete? We aren't looking for any fair treatment, we're just looking for a chance. Just to give you an idea of how active we are, last year the Ava Parks and Rec Soccer, my kids are in it, there were at least one homeschooler in their team. We'd like more local opportunities like this available to us. Yes, we could go to Springfield, but this is our community, and we like to stay here. This wouldn't only benefit us, it would benefit public school, you guys as well. For every homeschooler playing on a team, we'd bring more friends and family coming to that game, resulting in more revenue in concessions and game admittance. So, we ask you to vote in favor of the bylaws, give us a chance. If not, I would love to have some more discussion with you all, so that we can work together, because I really think that we could work homeschoolers and public schoolers together on this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Just, I gave you a letter as well from Mrs. Jenkins that she had written to the Board of Education. You each have a hard copy of that, also it's been uploaded to our G Drive, so it's there for your review. Mrs. Jenkins had been at a couple times, spoke with Mr. Dalton, spoke with myself, and we just want to make sure you had her request as well.
Next, we'll have the Ava Board Spotlight.
We have lots to do with this, Dr. Nash. I'm gonna ask you to come up first, if you would. As you know, each year we do a docu-drama at the high school, and Dr. Nash really coordinates all of that, but she has lots of partners that help her. I think we have some of them here today, and I would just like for her to recognize those partners. I'd like to recognize her because of all the work that she puts into it, she and Mr. Houck, but she couldn't do it by herself.
So, if you've heard the docu-drama, would you please stand up? Or move forward, Lane? We have. We have, Dr. Dalton asked me for a list of the people that were involved in that, and I said, well, give me a little bit and let me compile the list, because it is a long and extensive list. So, we have a lot of people from the emergency management team, Cox and Mercy Injury Prevention Centers from Springfield, Cox Air Systems that comes down for the helicopter. We have the Douglas County Health Department back here in the corner, and also the MOX Center assists with that. But anyway, there's Ava Fire Department, the City of Ava, just an extensive list. A whole bunch of students that are involved with this, and a whole bunch of faculty members that put together a video, and we'll be sharing that link with you as part of the video, so that you can view it. And it is an interview of families and students who have been involved in crashes so far this year, or within the past couple of years. So, it's very eye-opening to see their perceptions of that and how it has affected families. But the docu-drama is really meant to show students, you know, what happens in a car crash, what happens immediately following, and how that affects other people. So, I want to say thank you for everybody that was involved in that. We can't do it without you guys, and thank you for taking and investing your time in our students.
Keith, don't leave. Next, Mr. Dalton, I think you are going to talk about our school counselors.
If I could give our counselors.
Stand up.
As mad as you please, you can stand up, brag on you a little bit. We invited Mr. Martin also, but you ladies stole him. We did recognize our counseling staff. We've got Mrs. Karen Roberts, who's in our elementary, beside her is Katie Martin, who's at the high school. Miss Brittany Melton's in the middle school, and Miss Katrina Mattney works in the high school. I mentioned Mr. Martin, he's part of the time here at the high school. They're gonna share a little bit more about their programs here a little bit, so I won't get that far into it, and they can tell you some of the specifics, but the roles they play and the needs they need, the needs they meet are many. You know, we're getting ready for testing, helping kids get prepared for that, and training teachers to administer those tests, and mapping out the schedules for that. Learning lots about technology, so I'm also. You know, I could just list things after thing after thing that they do, that when they got into school counseling, it's not what they had in mind. You know, but those tasks come up and they meet them head-on, and we couldn't meet the needs of our students without it. You know, it's just a unique opportunity, a unique relationship that a council can have, you know, with students. They're not sitting in a classroom signing homework, it's just a different perspective to, they get to work with our kids. Miss Mattney does a lot of work in the high school, I didn't even mention scheduling and all those kinds of things they do. She keeps me in line on A-plus.
She hounds our seniors to fill out scholarship applications.
Again, want to recognize these ladies for the tremendous amount of work that they do and what they mean to our students and our staff. Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we want to recognize, and Coach Sawyer, I'm gonna ask you to step up here just a second, is Keith Moore. Keith doesn't know, that's why he, was one of the reasons he came tonight, Keith, would you come up?
Okay.
That's why you're talking out the way. So, if you've been to a ballgame in the Ava School District, you've seen Keith Moore, you probably haven't seen his face, but you've seen his body behind the camera. Keith has worked, and I don't know how many years, worked at the newspaper for.
I had a high school.
Nineteen sixty.
Almost forty-nine.
Almost forty-nine years. But Keith has, I don't know how many football games, basketball games, baseball games, he has been to. Keith has been the voice for the school district in a lot of areas. We lost a great friend when Keith decided to retire, but I just want to thank him for his dedicated effort to the Ava School District for those forty-nine years. You will be missed, irreplaceable, obviously, but we just appreciate everything you did for us as a school district.
Yeah, Mr. Moore, you know, has been with the newspaper, like I said, for forty-nine years, and I know Sue, gonna really miss him, we've got Josh coming on board now, really been working with and so forth. We call Keith, he's here to take pictures, he's on the sidelines.
For whatever reason.
For whatever reason. It may be a signing for a kid to go on to college, it may be somebody that's going on just for educational purposes and so forth, but Mr. Moore has been our right-hand man around here. If we forget to send him something, he emails us now, or calls me, and we get it to him, and I'm telling him, we're gonna miss him, and I'm glad to have Josh aboard, but Mr. Moore, we are definitely gonna miss you, sir.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll go into our principal and director reports, and we'll start with elementary principal, Dr. Hall.
Alright, Nina Sterling's been patting the list, but anyway, coming up on May seventh and eighth, we have our year-end celebrations, and so we always like to have at least one, maybe two board members per grade level come pass out certificates to kids. May seventh, I believe, is preschool, first grade and third grade, May eighth is kindergarten, second and fourth grade, so if you have a student in one of those grades that you're particularly attached to, contact the elementary office, or contact Dr. Powell's office, and we'll set that up and make arrangements.
Thank you. Next, we'll do the high school principal, Dr. Nash.
Ava High School went through a school-wide positive behavior support site visit this past week through our regional consultants, and we got one hundred out of one hundred points, a perfect score, so I'm very pleased with our students and our faculty for doing that. And our school-wide positive behavior support coaches, Mrs. Erin Basset and Mrs. Janelle Embry, so congratulations to them. On your table, there is a Tri-N Music Honor Society brochure for you, and Tri-N supports music in our schools, and so they wanted you to have this brochure, and it incorporates messages from the elementary, middle school, and high school. They're also going to be sending these to our representatives at the state level.
Thank you. Next, class special services director, Mrs. Swann.
Good evening. I just wanted, my teachers are wrapping up the school year, they're making lists of their students that would meet requirements for extended school year, where they can have some academic services, some occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language if needed. Miss Vicki Dudley today spent the morning, she went to preschool and some head start to work with some of our incoming kindergarten kids, just to do some pre-assessments to see where they need to start the first day of school, so they're ready to go and meet their goals. And I think it's a good time, I want to thank the counseling department, we couldn't do what we do without them, they are, we keep them very, very busy, and I truly appreciate each and every one of them.
Thank you. Next, we have the maintenance director, Mr. Valentine.
Everything's pretty well, business as usual in my department, just getting ready for summer cleaning, everything we do in the summer for maintenance.
Thank you. Next, we'll have executive administrative reports, Dr. Dalton.
Mr. Dalton is bringing that up, just giving you a couple updates, we don't really have much of an update on the State Board of Education, we still only have three members. Eddie Justice, who was one of the nominees, was heard in the gubernatorial nomination committee in the senate, and he was voted out of that committee onto the senate floor, but we still have no vote on the senate floor. And that would only make four, so it still doesn't make a working State Board of Education, because you have to have at least five votes to pass anything, the State Board. Really, legislation is pretty slow right now, obviously, they're a little busy in Jeff City with some investigations and other things that are going on. One bill of interest is House Bill fourteen twenty-four. It's interesting, it would move school board member elections to November, and it would move school board terms to four years instead of three. MSBA is adamantly against that, because they feel like with a November election, it becomes a political election, because obviously, you know, November's the largest election in the state. So, they are urging everybody to contact their representative and their senator, so. Other than that, it's pretty slow right now. Again, they've been fairly busy. I will hand out, it's that time of the year, again, I need you to review your committee assignments, and if you would like to change or sign up for a committee, please email Mrs. Sterling about that, so she can make those changes, we will bring them to you next month. I also want to congratulate somebody, Coach Sawyer won his three-hundredth ballgame today and got to win it at Hammond's Field. I mean, coaching the Ava Bears baseball team for twenty-three years over a thirty-four-year time span. Done all that right. I had to call Mr. Silvy to be sure I was correct on all of that, but Mr. Silvy helped straighten me out, he went back and pulled all of his record books, but it's a great accomplishment. You don't see many people, first of all, stay in it long enough to win that many ballgames, and not that many people last that long as a head coach, so. Proud of him and our baseball team. It was a little shaky early, but they ended up winning eighteen to three in Springfield at Hammond's Field, so that's a pretty neat experience for our kids, and got to play lots of kids tonight, so. Congratulations. Alright, couple exciting things going on. We have graduation, May eleventh. We have graduation, May eleventh at seven PM at the football field. We will be giving, getting you a calendar that has all of the May events on it. Couple other things, we have an opportunity through Cox Health to offer telemedicine in our school. So what that is, we have, oftentimes, we have students that their parents don't have a vehicle, can't get them to the doctor, that they may need to be seen for something, so telemedicine is, you have a TV, there's a camera, they can actually converse with the doctor. And there's a, if they are on Medicaid, it's paid for, there's no cost to the child. So we're meeting with Cox Health, they've written a grant for Douglas County, they really want to house it out of the Ava School District, so we're meeting with them tomorrow. I'm meeting them with the counselors and nurses to really see what all it entails, but we're excited about that. I've been part of that in a couple of other school districts. You can even use it for some behavioral support as well, so it's a pretty unique opportunity. It's that time of year that we are looking at insurance plans for next year, so I met with the staff last Wednesday, I think, went over what our insurance options were moving forward, whether we wanted to stay with that, whether we wanted to look at Hantum, so have given them all that information, sent out an email on Monday morning, so they are currently voting on that as a staff, on what they, what their choice would like to, would be. So it's never a pleasant conversation when you talk about insurance. I think the first thing I said to them was, "I hate insurance," and everybody in the room does as well, but we are going to see a rate increase. We've been very small for the last several years, we're part of the Missouri Educator Trust, which is a self-funded consortium. Depending on which plan we choose, we could see up to an eight-point-four percent increase in our health insurance premiums. We've not taken any, I think we had, we were either flat or one or two percent last year. The year before, we were zero, the year before that, we were zero. Medical trends across the nation are a little over six percent, so if you figure, we've seen a two percent increase in the last three years, we should have seen an eighteen percent increase. So I still think being part of the consortium is a great thing, it's just not been a good year for the consortium. That's just, that's just the way it is. Particularly for Ava, it's been a great year. Our loss ratios are great, but we weren't great two years ago when we didn't take an increase. That's part of being part of an eighty-three-person school, eighty-three district consortium. You have to take the good with the bad and support each other throughout, so. All right, let's go all the way over, let's stop right there. All right, so this is the same chart I show you every month. I didn't get to show you last month because our finances hadn't come in at that point, but we are still doing extremely well. We are still three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars above budget. So, and we have done that by, if you remember, our weighted ADA number on the top, we started estimating ADA in January. This is what we carried through from July, thirteen-hundred-and-thirty kids, and our state adequacy target has creeped up every month to full funding of sixty-two forty-one per weighted ADA. So we're pretty happy with the way things are rolling at this point, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars above target. I talked to you, I think, in February and March, I was a little worried about this number, and I thought I might scale it back, but I actually, Monica and I ran this again two weeks ago, and I could actually increase that number by about five or six kids. So our enrollment is strong, our attendance is strong, so we're pretty comfortable where we're at, at this point. Go down to your left, please. I gotta figure out a way to see this whole thing, so you can see it. Keep going, keep going. Now, keep going down. All right. We're still a little short on a couple of items. Transportation dollars, which we, I've talked to you every month, that's just not happening at this point. We, we're going to be close, we're going to be within five or six thousand dollars of hitting our transportation target. We're above in Prop C, and obviously, formula dollars, we are way above. But this is what they owe us to finish the year, so you have April, May, and June to come up with one million three-hundred thousand on the formula, one-seventy-three on the Prop C, and forty on the transportation. Our transportation's been running eleven or twelve thousand. This number's run, our Prop C's been running right at ninety-eight, so we're going to hit that target, and we're running about, a little north of four-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand dollars on formula dollars, so we're going to hit those targets. So any questions about that? Meeting with the Sire Committee currently, we've had one meeting, we're going to have another one coming, coming up. We have, the state budget's been passed out of the House, it's now at the senate. Ninety-three million dollars has been put in the formula on the House side, so that's fully funding the formula at sixty-three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars as the SAT. Currently, the SAT is sixty-two forty-one, so that's a big jump. The senate, I believe, is talking about taking some, why they do this, they're just moving money, taking some out of the formula and putting it in transportation. We'll see what happens. It all ends up in the same pot. So superintendent's request to all state legislators, wherever they'd be, reps or senators, is to fully fund the formula, because that's something we can, we can count on. We understand that. Okay? Any questions about that? We will be estimating revenue all next year, and I think I talked to you when I first came here, that school districts don't estimate revenue very often, and I said that, and we have estimated revenue every month since the second month I got here. And we're doing that for a couple of reasons. The proration factors changed for special ed and IP students, so we could draw down more dollars last year. We wouldn't have been able to draw them down last year, we would have had to wait till this year. I think we ended up a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to the good, above budget last year for that. This year, we've been growing. You know, we're up forty-five kids, so we wanted to take advantage of drawing those dollars down now. Next year, we are going to draw, as long as we end up in June at sixty-two forty-one on the state adequacy target, we're going to be able to collect revenue or track ADA for preschool kids. So it's nine percent of, so you take the total number of free-nuance lunch kids in your district, nine percent of that, whatever that number is, is the number of students you can draw ADA on at the preschool level. But in order to do that next year, you will have to estimate enrollment. And the percentages of free-nuance lunch and IP students that we can count towards our weighted ADA changes next year again, so we will be estimating enrollment from day one in order to draw down those dollars. I know that's confusing sometimes, when people don't always understand it, but if you wanted a lesson in that, I'm happy to give it to you. It's not real exciting, but I think it benefits our school district. We're going to be a little north of five-hundred, five-hundred thousand dollars that we've drawn down, that we may not have been able to draw down over the last year and a half, so. That is all I have, sir.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Dalton.
Well, I'm going to talk, you hear me talk each month a little bit about federal programs. You said probably what you're most familiar with is Title I, Title II, many. Those are our programs in place. A lot of that information is based on census poverty data. I know we've talked about, once I get an update, I kind of let you know where we are as we project some of that. We finally, just in the last couple of weeks, got some kind of guidance on what we can anticipate as we budget for that next year. What we were, our initial guidance was to figure ninety percent of what, of what we had, so we're looking at a ten percent reduction, at least in the initial plan, so that's, as we've built that, kind of anticipating what we're going to do with that, that's what we're working with at this point. As part of that process, a lot of, a lot of documentation with the federal funding that we go through. Throughout the course of the year, we've got lots of different activities. Elementary does a ton of parent involvement activities, some of those are title programs, funded with federal programs, but throughout the course of the year, we have surveyed parents, surveyed teachers, somewhere over four hundred surveys in the course of the year, just to get some feedback. Included in that would be listings of some of the programs we currently offer, ideas for things we might focus on moving forward, and that's the purpose of that. We're required, in just good practice anyway, get the feedback from parents, from our teachers, from the people involved. Hey, here are the things that we can do with that, because there are some guidelines with that federal funding, but as we make those decisions for our plan. So we met the end of last month with our group to go through that information. We started by looking at student achievement data. You know, the goal, we talked about the federal funding, and the purpose is to help all students achieve at their highest level, that's the purpose, so we, that's where we started. We went through the student data with, with the group that was able to meet with that committee. We went through those evaluations of survey results that we've got back. We went through the parent survey results and kind of what those areas of focus and interest were, and it was really interesting, I also shared with the group the feedback from the staff. You know, so it's like same, same ideas on there, different perspectives just on personnel, you know, and your role in that. The three areas of focus, we wanted to focus on were the same, which I thought it was good, you know, everybody seemed like on the same page, focused on the same things. The things you're going to hear us talk about, class size reduction, that's something we can use federal funding for, reading intervention, which I know we've talked about a lot, and then technology integration, you know, whether that's additional technology or tools or training. Both groups, same three areas of focus for that funding. We went through there, we'll hear the strengths of the program, here's some weaknesses that you might want to work on. You know, we've got a lot of ideas and things to, to look at as we go into next year. We have to map out a plan as a district. For us, Title I, it's elementary and middle school. Those are the two buildings that need to try to qualify for that funding. You know, we go through our parent involvement policy, get feedback and ideas from parents on what can we do to make that more appealing, to get more, more folks in the door. So just quite a process that we go through. My first time being on this end of it, going through that, so it was, it was interesting, eye-opening for me just to see, and, you know, got some areas we're going to focus on, and as we're mapping out that budget, those are the areas we're going to be focusing on primarily as we build that. Now, kind of going along with that, federal programs, I went to a conference today, Missouri Educator Lab, and obviously, Dr. Dahl and I talked about that a little bit. You know, it was, you go through that process, and it kind of took, took us through that today, folks from a lot of different districts. The focus is ensuring equitable access to excellent teachers, that's their model, that's the goal that they're focused on. Making sure students across the state all have access to outstanding teachers. You know, some areas they're talking about is, you know, what can we do with PD? Recruiting and retaining teachers, recruiting outstanding teachers to your district, retaining outstanding teachers that you have. It was really, it was interesting for me, they talked about different groups, the ones that we would, that we would fit into. Biggest group of schools when it comes to free-nuance lunch percentage, then you look at all your Title I schools. On the other end, the schools that are non-Title I, lowest percentage free-nuance, it's just a spectrum of school districts, and then this data as far as student achievement, experience of your staff, just a lot of different criteria that we'll be looking at here. There was just, it was interesting to look at those numbers and see that information, again, as we try to plan, as we look into next year with some of that funding. We meet with the professional development committee in those groups, it gives us some additional things to look at and consider as we, as we go forward looking into next school year. Any questions on any of that?
Thank you. Next, we will go into our discussion and action items, and we will start with state, federal assurances.
This is simply that the Board of Education approves this, and simply that we follow federal mandate for special education. I sign off on it, Mr. Dalton signs off on it, and Mr. Allison signs off on it. We just need, as a board, we need to support that. It's every year, this month, it's routine, so I see a motion, second to approve state federal assurances.
So I need a motion in second to approve the state federal assurances.
I'll make the motion.
Michael makes the motion, I have a second.
I'll say it.
Kenny seconds, all those in favor. The seven oh. Next, we'll have guidance, council review.
So I'm going to talk about what the high school is doing, Brooke's going to talk about what elementary, middle school is doing, and then Ms. Roberts is going to talk about what we're excited about doing next year. So first of all, I just want to say, I couldn't do what I do without Ms. Mattney, and she's going to hate me, but she really is the glue that keeps us all together, so when I talk about all the exciting things we get to do in our office, it's, you know, she does it all for us. She's, she's a good woman to have. So every year, we do a college and career fair, and that continues to grow as more businesses start to hear about what we're doing. I think this year, this past year, we got to forty-eight, so we're almost nearing that fifty mark, so we're really excited about that. I think some of you guys even came out for it. Job shadowing, we are really excited about that. We're getting really great reviews back from our community members and just people in general who have had our students, raving about, you know, the professionalism, their excitement about learning, and so that's just a really good opportunity for our kids to really gain some experience about what they want to do after high school. We do a senior pair at night, a freshman orientation, and a freshman pair at night, so this gives the opportunity for parents to get on campus, learn about, Ms. Dalton was at our last one, just, you know, what are our kids going to take their freshman year? What does your kid need to graduate? Just kind of, what's that plan look like when they leave high school? Ms. Mattney does a phenomenal job with our scholarships, and so if you're interested, it's going to be on the last leave of school at nine-thirty. Nine-thirty, see, got to ask her. So nine-thirty, we give out a ton of money, and she works hard at that. She's always tracking down kids, and she's really working hard at making those connections with our, not only our businesses, but just our local organizations, and so that's something we do really well as well, that we're excited about, whether it be through Care to Learn, our scholarships, or the nursing homes, since our students have the opportunity to earn their CNA certification. We're just really excited about all the opportunities our students have with all of our organizations. So we're in the throes of testing right now, so that's super exciting, and then all of our students, right? Yeah, that's awesome. We have a lot of college recruiters and military recruiters come on the campus and meet with our students, so it's just another opportunity for our students to meet. We're also taking, we send our kids to OTC, we've sent our kids to NSUS Plains, and our students can take two college days if they want to go out and visit somewhere, so we're thankful for that. We've been busy hitting our feeder schools, we've went to Plainview, so we did a parent night there. We, Dorple came to us, and then Skyline, we went out there, so we're trying to recruit those kids that have the option to choose here and explaining why they should pick here. We've been kind of piloting the Workkeys test this past year, we tested about twelve students, that makes them work-ready whenever they leave here, so we're, right now, if they choose to go work at Copeland, they get priority hiring. The nursing home is looking at taking that and giving priority hiring at that. West Plains is a Workkeys-ready community, so if any of our students were to go to West Plains, for whatever reason, they get priority hiring as well, so we're giving that opportunity for our students. Ms. Mattney worked really hard at getting a motivational speaker here for free, she worked really hard. I think every day, we were chatting about that, sending emails back and forth, so we're thankful for that experience. We've been working hard with jury to figure out, you know, hey, if our students are sending bill credit, what are our options for that, trying to get some bill credit classes seeded. Mr. Hamby's doing that right now for us, so we're thankful for that. And then, we've been working hard with our kids to get them enrolled for college. I think today, I had six students in my office all at once registering for OTC. I think today I had six students in my office all at once registering for OTC classes, so that was really fun. And then we did a fast for night, and so we're just thankful for a lot of things that we get to be doing.
Okay, okay. Well, high school's kind of unique in its own way, but we all work together. One thing we do really well too that she didn't mention is that if one of us is gone, we just run to the other building and fill in for one another and just help each other, so that's something we do often. Helping with the high school, I help with our seventh and eighth grade kind of get ready for their five-year plan, and we do Missouri Connections, and they do some career path planning, which then I give to Ms. Burke Dalton, she uses for the high school planning. And then Kara starts that way back in kindergarten. So we do career readiness all the way from kindergarten till we get to high school. So they should, she just had a career day. I took seventh graders to Mountain Grove, and we did a seventh graders go to work day. So we try to build that in all the time in our program. Part of it, we do guidance curriculum. I know Kara and I especially get in the classroom and do lessons with each grade, every student, to cover our curriculum, whether it's personal social issues or career development or academic issues that they might have. We also do a lot of responsive services and just help kids that are going through crisis or emergency situations and step in and help kids in those areas. We coordinate some child abuse awareness assemblies that we just finished doing. And the testing part of it, as far as helping the special ed department and the gifted department, we've tested, I think you alone have tested over 50, so probably 75 or more students we've tested this year, and I think I finished my last one today. We have done a lot of trauma-informed training, just trying to stay current with the news with trauma and different things that we're learning all the time. We collaborate on the crisis plan and suicide prevention work. We've been to several trainings this year with Mr. Dalton, and we meet regularly, and we're getting ready to do more with our suicide prevention plan and some things that we have to do. We updated our community resource guide as a team and have more resources for our students so that they can access help if they need to. And Care to Learn, she already mentioned, but those are some things, and if you have anything that you want to add for the elementary, but that's, that's a lot of things that we do.
Thank you, God. We go a lot, we're busy, we're busy ladies. So our goals for next year, some of the things that we're targeting to work toward. We want to get our advisory committee reestablished and going early in the year so that we have meetings throughout the year. That's something that slid, by the way, aside on us this year, so it's a target and a priority for us this next year. We are hopeful for more team meetings with each other. We are going to obviously continue our community collaboratives. Katie is a member of Chart, which is responsible for our child abuse awareness and those interventions that we do with second, fourth, and sixth grade. So we're going to continue being a part of those. Obviously, our Care to Learn, our code drive with the sheriffs department, we partner with them and help distribute those codes as well. So we're going to keep doing what we do. We are, again, an active part of that suicide prevention plan. We're excited about some of the things that are coming. We're talking about some ways to reach parents and hopefully make the difference for that one kid family that needs that intervention. Professional development, possibly the Missouri School Council Association training in the fall, which is a weekend training, so talking about that. And we want to target more trauma-informed strategies for our staff to use. We're learning more and more about how trauma changes the brain, affects the way kids think and react to everything. And we want tools in place for our staff, strategies that they can easily use that help those kids that are in that mode of thinking.
Any questions for our counselors? You've done a great job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody need a motion and vote to approve the guidance and the council review. Kenny makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll say it.
Michael seconds, all those in favor? The seven oh. Next, we'll have the depository agreement.
This is the, would be the fourth time that we would renew with First Home Bank. We did a, we originally did, it was a five-year agreement, but renewable each year. Monica is the one that really deals with First Home Bank. She's very happy with them at this time. We are guaranteed not to, our interest rate on the monies that we have at First Home will not drop below 0.55. It's currently a little north of 1%. Correct deposits work smoothly. Staff's been very friendly and helpful, so we have no question about renewing with that for more resources.
Okay, so I need a motion, but needed for the renewal of the depository agreement with First Home Bank.
I'll make the motion.
Troy makes a motion, I have a second. Lo, makes a second, all those in favor? The seven oh. Next, we'll have MSBA policy update, 2018 A.
First thing we'll go through, I gave these to you last month, so they've been in your board packet for the last two months. I'll go through the policy updates first. The first one is IGBD. It is critical, so that means we have to adopt it before July 1st because a state law has changed that requires us to do something differently. Policy terms concern at-risk students and their identification. It simply, it simply helps to outline the measures that help the district identify an at-risk student. It does require students who are identified as at-risk to receive academic or career counseling. Actually, this is not a change for us as a district because we're already doing it, but we have to adopt the policies that says that we have to do what we're already doing. We're already there, so there's no change for us, but we have to adopt the policy, have to adopt this policy. IKF is also critical. It is graduation requirement policy, and it's just one small change in that policy. It removes the exception for waiving the requirement for passing an American civics exam for high school students who have transferred from another state. If they, if they pass that exam in another state and can show proof, they would not have to complete it. But we've, if you have a junior that has already taken a government class and they, and they transfer in here, but they didn't require them to pass a civics exam in that other state, we, if, we didn't make them go back and pass it. But now it is a requirement of the state of Missouri to pass that American government or American civics exam. So JHD, that policy is also critical. It outlines the requirements for academic and career counseling. Will that, will take place prior to entering high school? Again, we started in kindergarten, so not a change for us, but some school districts don't do that. We just have to adopt the policy in case these three wonderful counselors aren't here and somebody doesn't want to do that in the future. JHDF is also a new state law that the policy outlines the requirements for a youth suicide awareness and prevention policy. Our counseling team has been working diligently with Mr. Dalton on revamping our plan and developing a better plan over the past year, and we will be ready to go by the beginning of next year with that plan. So we need a motion to approve those four policies, and then I'll go through the regulations.
Yes. On the IGBD?
Yes.
On students leaving school prior to graduation? How does the homeschool fit into that if someone's leaving, is it just included with another school?
So yes, so if somebody was choosing to homeschool their student, we simply have to have something from the parents that says that they're homeschooling. It's only if they're just dropping out that we have to report to the literacy hotline.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that clear as mud?
Yep. Well, I mean, it doesn't read that away, but...
But that's what it is. We, it's, you know, in Missouri, you know, the county clerk has homeschool forms, but really to meet the standard of the law, you have to have notification writing from the parent that says that they're homeschooling.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion and vote needed for policies IGBD, IKF, JHD, JHDF. Mark makes a motion, I have a second. Troy seconds, any other discussion? Here are none, all those in favor? The seven oh.
Okay, so the regulations that, these do not require board approval, but I want to go through them because they are also in the 2018 A packet. DJFA is managing the federal funds, there's some, been some how you manage funds change. We meet all of the requirements currently, but we just need, we will have to implement that regulation, which is not an issue at all. IGBD, we're removing that procedure because it's changed. Obviously, it's in that policy now, so we can remove that procedure. JHD, we're also just removing that procedure. IGD is the one directly related to Misha, so I've been asked several questions about that, so I wanted to go into a very lengthy conversation about that. So I asked Dr. Nash and Mr. Sawyer to bring our head coaches and our directors, so our co-director and our band directors together, anybody that has Misha, that their kids participate in Misha activities, to read the policy, or read the regulation, I'm sorry, and make a recommendation to the Board of Education. That has been uploaded, you have seen that, I assume, but I can answer any questions about that. So they have brought that regulation forward to the Board of Education. Their recommendation is to not, their recommendation is to not adopt the regulation. The Board of Education, again, does not actually adopt it, but it would direct the superintendent designated to create the necessary process and procedure to allow part-time students participating. I was also asked the question about what are other schools doing? So I wanted to go through that just briefly with you. And when I say no, that means they're not adopting this regulation, or I will explain what they are doing. Formuland is no, Thayer is no, Hollister is no, Salem is no, Cabool is no, Willow Springs is no, Logan Rogersville is forming a committee just like we did to get a recommendation to their Board of Education. Baller is still discussing it. Marshfield is a no. Mansfield did adopt the MSBA regulation, required two seated classes, along with evidence of the curriculum from, if it, from homeschool curriculum or private school. Charters, obviously don't have charters in this area, so that doesn't really affect us. Sparta has taken no action at this time. Gainesville's not taking any action at this time. Reed Springs is a no. Mountain Grove is a no, and Liberty is a no. I tried to contact the schools that I felt we competed with the most, again, and I would open it up for discussion. Everybody has questions on that I could try to answer.
On the committee concerns, especially number two, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
I have it sitting in front of me.
Oh, you don't, can you?
I'm sorry. And I quote a well amount of seat time, students in public school settings.
Okay.
So I think what they mean by this, and Coach Sawyer, you help me if I'm wrong with this, or Coach Mountlow, or Ms. Wolf skills here, I think as well. I think what they meant by that, because I was not part of this committee, was that students have to be here seven hours a day. Homeschool students, apparently, I mean, they would have, if they're in a quality program, would have seat time as well. I think they need to be here seven hours a day, is what they mean by that. They have to be in the building at Ava High School every single school, seven hours a day.
So they think it's unfair that a homeschool wouldn't be putting the same amount of hours in the school?
That's the way I would interpret that requirement.
So what would that have to do with what we're trying to decide with Misha?
I believe that they feel like those students are here at Ava High School, following the policy and procedures in the same curriculum. And other students don't have to follow the same guideline, academic guidelines, in order to participate.
Well, they do have to show that they've met the guidelines of Misha, correct?
Yes, there has to be a plan put together. They have to be enrolled in two classes. I mean, according to the MSBA policy, they have to be enrolled in two. And if they want to participate in band, band would have to be one of them, or choir, choir has to be one of them. They can obviously be enrolled in more than two.
I, yeah, I just don't see what, why that's one of the reasons. As far as the number one and number two.
I think we just have to say your, it's a little boring.
Thank you. We'll check if I need to do it. So, so as far as number two, it's going to be obvious that homeschoolers aren't going to have the same amount of hours inside the school system because they're homeschoolers. So to me, that doesn't, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense of that being a reason. The one and the three is mostly unfair, basically, I'm reading it as unfair grading scale or unfair rigorous education or whatever.
Here's what I, here's what I think their concern is, let me express that. I would be the first one to say, I think it's every parent's right to make that decision, whether they homeschool or send their child to private school. I think their concern is, there are so many different types of programs and so many different ways. There are some fabulous homeschool programs out there, but the state of Missouri has no regulation on it, and that, I think, is a concern for them, that you can, you can pick and choose what type of homeschool that you participate in.
Okay, so, did, did the committee look at the Misha?
Yes.
Optional guidelines, like it's on their site? So whenever a homeschooler comes to our school and wants to join, become a member of our school and quit homeschooling, and I'll just read right here, it says, "The academic review process that is necessary to confirm ongoing academic eligibility of non-traditional Option II students is probably very similar to the review that schools currently conduct when a student enrolls in your school for the first time after being enrolled in a non-traditional education environment." So we've already got something in place, so if someone comes in from a homeschool and wants to become a full-time student here, we've already got guidelines in place, correct?
Correct.
So this is basically saying that that's the exact same process we'll use, that we use now. So if we can use that process for a homeschooler that wants to be a full-time student here, why can't we use the same process for a student, a homeschool student that wants to continue to homeschool, and use those same guidelines? I don't understand why there'd be a difference there. So that would take care of number one and number two concerns on the committee. I, I feel that as a taxpayer, you know, I feel that the taxpayers basically of this district own this school. I feel that they have a responsibility of what happens here, you know? Everybody pays taxes, and they elect us guys to come in and, you know, be a representative for them, and I feel I represent homeschoolers. for them, and I feel I represent homeschoolers and people that don't homeschool. So, I, I feel that it's, since Misha's opened up the door for us to allow that to happen, you know, they're, they're saying it's okay and now we're trying to, we may be saying that it's not okay. So, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the Board directs the superintendent to create the necessary processes and procedures to allow part-time high school students to participate in Misha activities under Misha bylaws 2.3.4, addressing non-traditional option two students.
I have a motion on the table.
Did you?
I'll have a copy.
Okay.
Do you have a copy?
Yes.
So, she's the motion, correct?
It's the starred.
The starred one. I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Motion has been made on the table, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
This is par six seconds, discussion.
I would just like to add, from what I gather from this, is it also kind of means that these sporting events and extracurricular activities are a privilege for these students. And some of these coaches and directors or administrators of these activities have, from what I gather, is additional behavioral and educational and standards that they have to meet to be on that, to be part of that. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Mr. Sawyer, that'd be correct. Mike?
And that, it may not, seems like, you know, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I gather was, it was, doesn't seem as fair for maybe some of the public school students that are there all day to participate, to, to meet these higher standards, to be a part of this, that maybe that, it would be easier to be a part of that without, with only being in school, just what, two hours, is that what we said?
That, that would be a...
An option, yeah.
But they do school also. It's not like they're not going to school and then they just show up for two hours here and they get to play. They're, they're doing school and they have to have proof of it and they have to meet all the guidelines, the same guidelines that the public schools' kids have.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I understand that.
So, it's not like it's unfair, I mean...
No, that, as far as the education.
It would be like if we got into the virtual school and we did, and Dr. Dahl is kind of into that. So, let's say we have kids that, for some other reason, maybe medical or, or other reasons, have to take part of their day in virtual at home, but then can do the rest in public. Should they be denied also? You know, I mean, there's, how are we going to look at it? And we will be getting into more virtual school as we go on. That's, that's becoming quite a, a popular thing to get into. So, we haven't been addressed lately on that, but I think you're kind of into that a little bit, aren't you?
Yeah, absolutely.
But, and they are getting the education, you know, their standards they're meeting, they have to meet, correct?
They have to, they have to show it, yeah.
Yeah, they have to meet that, I understand that. What I'm saying is, is then you're going by the behavioral and the other things, you're more going by for the other part of the day, more going by the parents or the whoever's teaching at home.
When you say behavioral, what are you, what are you, what are you talking about there?
Well, so, Mr. Sawyer, can you address citizenship? Is that...
Yeah, I think that's...
We have policies, what we call our ATOB, our citizenship policies, that all our extracurricular kids have to meet.
Okay. As far as just being at school, staying out of trouble, meeting all guidelines, which, yeah, your kids are going to do that too, the homeschool kids do that, that's no problem. We just feel, I tell you, just as a committee, we feel like they need to be here at school with us. As a committee, that's the way we feel, you know? I have lots, I have young, where Joe, Joe was out here, Joe would come in as a freshman or sophomore with us and so forth, did a super job and stuff. We just felt as a committee, we need them here at school with us, because they're going to miss out on so much stuff if we have to make an announcement or something that, hey, we're going to do this or we're going to do that. That's just what we felt as a committee. They need to be here at school with us.
I would agree with Mr. Sawyer.
There's nothing to be with behavior or nothing, because those kids are just as good as gold too, okay?
You know, all, all people that involve in extracurricular activities do a higher standard.
Yes, we do. They get double dipped, Troy, you know that all the time. You know, if a kid gets in trouble for something here, then as a coach, we nail them too, you know what I'm saying? So, but just as a committee, we felt like we needed to have them here at school.
I mean, the same, the same thing applies to, the, the rules are the same, people, they're no different. If a child, if a homeschool is allowed to play in sports, the rules would be the same. There's no extra get out of jail free card, basically. It happens, if, you know, and this, this isn't like Little League, this is, we're mostly talking about high school ball. You know, if you're, if the coach thinks that that kid's going to be the best chance to complete that play or make that basket, that's what they're going, it's who they're going to play. And there's going to be some on the bench, there's going to be some playing. I think we all understand that. It's, but I mean, it's just a fair thing, well, look at it.
Any other discussion before we vote?
Yeah.
Question in back.
Can I, can I make a statement or not before voting?
How do you do that public comment, I'm sorry?
I have a question.
Yes.
Since Misha has changed their policy, their opinion?
They're leaving it up to the school district, yeah.
Yeah. Does that create a liability issue for the district?
I was asked that question, so I posed that to our school attorney, and he says absolutely not, because it's, it's the school district's option. They're not telling us we have to do it, they're telling us we can if we choose to. That's the opinion of our...
So, Dr. Dahl, you said there's no public comment on it at all before you made the decision as a school? I'm just not familiar in...
That's what, we had somebody sign up to address it.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm against the, the homeschool programs at all, and then all the kids that I've been around are really well-behaved, really good kids that have been homeschooled, I haven't been around all of them. I just don't know today at this time that, with what we've been given in the committee's recommendation, that I know if I'm willing to go against the committee's recommendation today. I would like to look into it more and discuss it more, I mean, is, is my opinion. I think there may be, I mean, I think where Misha is going and what they've said is, it's up to the schools, there's a lot of schools obviously not adopting it, and is it for the same reasons?
Well, I think, I think a lot of it's just fear, you know?
So, that's, that's...
There were, there were some concerns that Lowell heard about, you know, and just people fear that such, kind of like a kid that's already in the school system might be failing on grades and drop out to homeschool so it could show that the grade isn't good. But now, I'm telling you, there's, there's a lot of leeway for us to make these rules and stuff like that can't happen. And that's, that's where we would direct the superintendent to look into it and get the rules where we all want it.
Such as, such as another issue would be, what about for these two hours? What about transportation, for instance? Are we going to be, is the school system going to be required in this?
I believe that parents would probably be bringing them in.
I'd say in almost all cases, yes. But that'd be, that would be the requirement?
And, you know, one of the ideas, I believe it was on the Misha, I think it was on this one here, was that, you know, we could even use our end of semester testing if we felt that we needed to, to confirm that a student is where they need to be. If we see some, something in what they're bringing doesn't look right, we can do that. We can implement all kinds of safeguards, basically, to make sure that everything is fair and it can be modified.
It needs to be.
Yeah, it does. It needs to be fair for everybody.
I have another question.
Okay.
Last fall, we had a homeschooler run across country, but she only ran in certain events that weren't Misha sanctioned. That's, that's where I was going with this.
So, let me do this.
That's my daughter, that's incorrect.
Okay, let me, okay, let me do this. And you'll have to agree for me to do this. Let me gather some more information, let me, let me see if I can, I will talk to Ms. Feldcamp and meet with a group and gather some more information. Coach Sawyer will get to help me do that. Dr. Nash will bring back more information to you for you guys to look at and have a discussion around. Is that okay?
No, we can still make this vote and still do that too.
Right.
Yeah, because all I'm doing is voting to direct, you know, the, the Board would be voting to direct you and then can, we're not changing policy.
Then what was it again, to direct Dr. Dahl in?
To, basically to come up with all the guidelines that we'll need, because it's, it's not just a set amount of guidelines, we can actually tailor it to our school. It doesn't have to be what Misha recommended or what MSBA recommended. We can actually modify it in between or add things even that they don't have on there, just to make sure that everything is fair for all the kids, because we, I mean, we don't want anything unfair for the homeschooler or for the public school.
I'm a little unclear. Are we voting to implement or are we voting to direct you to do some more research and bring some more stuff back to us about this?
I have a motion. I mean, we have a motion. The motion said the Board directs the superintendent designate to create the necessary processes and procedures to allow part-time high school students to participate in Misha activities under Misha bylaw 2.3.4, addressing non-occursional option two students.
So, we have a motion and a second on the table. If there is no other discussion, we're going to move to having a vote. All those in favor?
Wait a minute here. If we vote this down, I mean, if we vote this down now, it's, it's a dead issue, right?
The way this motion...
Yes, the way that motion is made.
Yes.
That motion can be made next month?
Yeah, but you're going to have to take it down.
Do I?
You're going to have to do that now.
You have to withdraw and change it.
Go ahead.
Why?
For us to...
It can't be voted on in another month? It's, it's just a board directive to the superintendent. I mean, it would be no different than us telling him to go buy a house and if he didn't get it done, go tell him again, you know, or whatever. Is that right, Dr. Dahl? It's just a directive?
Correct. So, my confusion will be, are you, but then, are you going to make a, I have no directive to move forward with, if this is voted, if it's voted yes, I do, if it's voted down, I don't, it's just dead.
Well, it's, without it, it's the same anymore, yeah. We're not changing policy. A policy already allows both ways. So, we're not changing policy.
But if it, but if it's voted down, he's not going to bring anything to us next
So, I think what Lowell wants you to do is change your motion to direct me to gather more information and bring you a possible procedure.
Yes.
I think that's, am I correct with that?
Instead of what?
Instead of directing me to implement the procedure, bring you a sample procedure, I guess, either in May or June, as soon as I can get it down.
Well, I mean, everybody here needs input on this.
That's a lot of work, though, because it's not going to go through anyway.
No, that's my job.
I mean, everybody here needs input on this.
It's, yeah, we're not, we're not implementing any exact guideline right now, we're just, we're just, he's going to start working on it, basically.
Yeah, but if we vote on this and it's voted down, we're not telling him to do anything. It's a dead issue.
If we don't go down today, we won't either.
It's, it's a dead issue.
I guess we're looking at a different way.
I guess we just need to vote on it.
Well, fair enough.
I don't think it'll be down.
We have a motion and a second, we need to just go ahead and move forward.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion and a second on the table, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We have three for, those, those against? Be four. Motion is not four to three. That concludes our open session meeting, we will adjourn to closed session after this. So, we need a, next regular board meeting will be May 17, 2018, at 6:30 in the same boardroom. So, we need a motion and a second to go into closed session. Can you make this motion, do I have a second? Michael, seconds, all those in favor? The seven oh.